Okay, thank you. You're 79 as well. Someone's typing.
Yeah, we need to mute someone whoever's typing.
Okay, good morning, everyone. This is the regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Selectmen of the Town of New Canaan for Tuesday, July 6, 2021. It's a virtual meeting and all three members of the Selectmen are on by Zoom and our town staff is on by Zoom, but any attendee, we have seven attendees. This is a so my name is Kevin Morningham, first Selectman. We're supposed to under new rules that became effective July 1st. We're supposed to identify ourselves as we speak and then also say our name as we do a roll call unless the vote is unanimous. So the first item today is to amend the agenda. We have a item from Public Works for a maintenance agreement for with Aegis Energy Services. And I would ask for a motion to amend the agenda to add this item.
So.
Nick. Nick Williams.
I'm Nick Williams.
Are saying Kathleen.
Kathleen Corbett seconds.
Okay, all favor. Oh. That's unanimous. Okay. Moving on to the first item on the agenda was the minutes of our last meeting on June 15, 2021. Any comments or corrections about the minutes?
None here.
I'd ask for a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
Kathleen Corbett moves. Next second. Okay, all in favor? That's unanimous. Okay, public comments for this meeting, since it is a virtual meeting, will be done by raising your hand on the Zoom tool. And Pam Flynn will recognize you and open your mic to comment. Members of the public are welcome to provide comments on the agenda topics scheduled for review and or vote. So does anyone at this time? I see we have seven attendees. Anyone at this time wish to comment? Items on the agenda? Do we see any hands, Pam?
No, no hands.
Okay. We got item three on the agenda for resurfacing platform tennis court. Steve Banker, good morning, Steve. You're you're still muted, Steve. Steve, you gotta unmute.
I'm muted. I'm muted.
Good morning.
Well said. Hi, Steve Banker Recreation.
Go ahead, Steve.
Okay, um, we have, we have five platform tennis courts of Wavine Pool between the ages of 14 and 16 years of age, one quarter, three years old. We normally resurface one of our courts every year. This court service is in good shape. That way about every three years they get the surface. We have several screens of some of some of the older courts that are starting to fail. The screens are, like I said, 14 to 16 years of age. But outside of weather 24/7 for that day, that's like the time. So we've had some situations where either some bumps against the screen and the screen will tear along the seam where it's stitched together with with a wire mesh. So we need to replace some of our screens because they failed. I know I had to replace, repair four or five last year and they came down and identified a number of people in place. So this contract is for Riley Green Mountain. They've done the workforce for many years. They built all our courts, but they would come in, resurface one of our courts, repaint it, do aggregate on the on the surface and replace that. It's about nine or 10 sections of screening that have failed. So that's what the contract issues.
Any questions for Steve?
No.
Steve, I have no questions. I therefore move that we approve this request from a Recreation Director to enter into a contract with Riley Green Mountain Platform Tennis for $16,529.50 to resurface platform tennis court one and to replace several sections of screens on court one through four. Do I have a second? That's Kevin Morningham moving.
Second, second here, Nick Williams.
Further discussion? All in favor? Hi.
Hi.
That's unanimous.
All right, the second item I have is recreation software. We have our our recreation software, RecTrack, is Superbot Systems. And the contract for next year is $8,022. We use it as as a transfer station for their their registration for permits for the transfer station. We use it for the for the rec department, the LAP Center, for the paddle tennis courts. We also use for our line sales for for the 4th of July. We also use it for for the pool at Kiwanis Park for our our past, our past system. So the contract's $8,022 a year. I asked if we approved that.
Okay, any questions for Steve on this?
None here.
Routine item? Yes, Kathleen, go ahead.
Just a just a quick, quick question, Steve. Is this the same price that we've paid in previous years or has that been ticking up?
It's up, it's it's up maybe $200, you know, last year they were like 70, about $7,800. So it's up about $300.
So this is the annual maintenance cost? Yeah, have they upgraded it at all?
We also added some modules. We added credit card modules to a couple places, added additional credit card machine. So that's probably the reason for it.
Okay.
Steve, how many years, how many years have we used RecTrack?
Wow. About 12 to 14 years.
Yeah, Kathleen, I've asked the people look at at the software packages like this to see if it's been maintained, current, upgraded, and whether there's a better product in the marketplace. So.
Good.
But I see it seems to serve our needs and we've actually expanded its use in the past two years beyond typical recreation programs.
Great. Thank you.
With that, I move, we approve the request from the Recreation Department to enter into a contract with Remont Systems for $8,022 for the annual license for the RecTrack software. Go to a second.
Kathleen Corbett, second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
That's unanimous. And then the next one also is Steve's.
Refuge Services. Yeah, we contracted with J.C. Refuge for garbage pickup at the Wavine Pool from June 1st to Labor Day. Also for the Bee Park Lodge dumpster there from they come in April 1st through November. And then also they do the LAP Center on a bi-weekly basis for the year. They've held their price from last year, so the same price as last year. Get the contract for garbage pickup in these places.
Any questions for Steve on this one? Kathleen?
Hey Steve, what's being done at Kiwanis Park? Do they do pickup there as well?
No, the the Y break, the Y has a dumpster that they they have a service, so they allow us to put their dumpster as well. So we don't, we don't generate that much refugees down in Kiwanis. It works out fine. I did have them there previously, but we piggyback on the Y.
Okay.
Further questions? I move that we approve this request from the Recreation Department to enter into a contract with J.C. Refuge for the service at Bee Park, Wavine Pool, and Lappin Community Center as Steve described. You have a second?
Second year.
Further discussion? All in favor? Unanimous? That's unanimous. Thank you. And then the final one for Steve, tennis court resurfacing and painting.
We have seven post-education concrete tennis courts, the high school. They were built seven years ago and the paint surfaces peeling is places. And so we need to have them come in. They need to grind out the surface of three to seven courts and some of the base, the end line areas where the the paint is peeled and also scarred by the rest of the courts. And then they'll come in, they'll put a a new sealer, base sealer down on all the courts and with the two coats of color on it, paint the lines. So it's about every seven, every seven to 10 years needs to replace two paint courts. So this is the time to do it. They need we have money, the budget for it. The contracts within the money of your budget.
Questions for Steve?
None here.
Guys, we're getting good use of, got to pay the Recreation Director to enter into a contract with Hiding, Hiding Tennis LLC for $61,534 to resurface and paint seven tennis courts at the high school. Do I have a second?
Second.
Kathleen, second for the discussion? All in favor? That's unanimous. Yes, Kathleen?
Yes.
Raise your hand or say aye. Thank you, Steve.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Carriage Barn Renovation Project, Tiger Man.
Yeah, Bill Ossing, Public Works, I'll be presenting that one this morning. Back in November, we went out to bid for renovation works for the Carriage Barn, which included the ADA upgrades to the bathroom accessible room. We looked at the some of the other open space, the office space and the Carriage Barn folks who are the who came to the Society for the Arts, I should say, asked if we could look at the project a little more and they they are also said they would help out with some costs on this. When we received the bids back, it came in with ready construction, was a little bit of $217,000. We would like to accrue to contract with ready construction. Also joining us this morning is Hillary Whitman. She's the staff director over there and then Angela Bestiallo, she's the president of the Association. You go on as we talk. Yeah. And they're
You've been breaking up a bit, so I don't know if everyone heard.
Yeah, they're contributing $50,000 towards this project. So Hillary and Angela, you're both on now if you'd like to add anything.
Yes, this is Hillary Whitman, Director of the Carriage Barn Art Center. Yes, and also just wanted to mention, in addition to the $50,000 that we're contributing towards the towards this construction project, we've also just made an investment of $40,000 to installing air conditioning into the Carriage Barn Art Center, which is something that has, for a long time, we've wanted to do and will enable us to remain open and operate 12 months out of the year, which is something we haven't been able to do. So we're very excited about that. And this project will really, you know, bring us to ADA compliance, which is, you know, the most important thing, but also we're going to be able to make our, you know, our reception area and office space more functional, add a multi-purpose room that we can use as a classroom and for educational programs and community meetings. So it's it's going to vastly improve our space and we're really very excited about this.
And this is Angela. I'll just say thank you for working with us. It's so hard to make the renovations possible and we're really looking forward to what it can do for the town.
Thank you, Angela. Any questions for Hillary or Bill or Angela?
Just, just for Bill, this is already in a capital budget. Is that correct, Bill?
Correct. The funding's been approved for this. And I'd just like to add also one last thing, that the Carriage Barn, there used to be an apartment there that they were collecting revenue on and they're forfeiting that apartment to make these renovations possible, so they can expand the programming. So you know, they're putting a lot of funding into this when you look at the revenue that they're giving up to do this.
Bill, I'm sorry, you broke up. I couldn't hear. They're doing what with the apartment? They're giving it up or?
Yes, we give up this law apartment was here so that we can make these bathrooms and ADA accessible items all work. So, you know, we have to thank them for that and I think it'll be a good program.
Great, thank you.
Okay, any questions?
It does, it I was just gonna say, it seems like a, you know, very good project, well needed funding. So thank you for doing that.
No, this is a good project.
I think we're all happy to have a Carriage Barn upgraded. So thank you, Hillary and Angela, for your your contribution to this. And I we approved the request from Public Works to enter into a contract that Ready Construction Inc. for $217,000 plus a 10% contingency retort of $238,700 for renovation work, including ADA upgrades to the Carriage Barn. Do I have a second?
Second here.
Further discussion? All in favor? Hi? That's unanimous. Thanks very much, Hillary and Angela and Bill. Thank you. Okay, moving on to the John Howe has a number of items to approve annual contracts and purchasing agreements for supplies and services. Go ahead, John.
Yes, good morning, John Howe, Park Superintendent. I'd be glad to go through all the items if you want me to, or if you have any questions, whatever, whatever's best.
They're they're on our tablets and Kathleen and Nick, do you have any questions? Go ahead, Kathleen.
Just a question, John. On on the Tom Erwin, the $3,000 for taking a look at Saks and Connor Field and with a note that says we should be doing this every two years. I think we just did it last October, November. Is that right? Are we doing it again this year?
We'll be doing it again, but it will really be in 2022. We'll do it next spring, which will give us the two years and then we'll still have part of the growing season so that we can make any adjustments from there. That's why we want to do it. And this being a blanket order, we'll put it in for purchasing and then it will be all, it will be ready to go.
Okay, great. And then I just had a question on, we talked about this last, have you done the the seeding and the pesticides on the athletic fields yet? The season?
We did do the pesticides last Tuesday, I believe. We we have, we have been seeding, but we we just did some seeding, but we have more to go. Weather's been our issue the last few weeks with that.
Sure, yeah.
And these and these new numbers include the two extra applications and seed for both Saks School and the Farm Road and Track Fields for this upcoming year. So there'll be two additional applications to seed there.
Okay, great. And at in our last meeting, I believe it was, and Tiger, correct me if I'm wrong, I'd seen a draft of what you had written, which I thought was great in terms of the use of pesticides on the town athletic fields. And that was going to be posted, but I haven't seen that on the website. Did we forget to do that?
Kathleen Tiger Man, Director of Public Works. We didn't forget. We just, we'll have it posted shortly. John had gone through it. We had looked at it and then we're just having it posted ourselves.
Okay, just this is a reminder that right, that should be posted prior to the application of pesticides as notification.
Well, the notification is on the field per state statute through, you know, we can't miss. We have a little bit of trouble scheduling, so I didn't want to have it up too early. And we will make sure we do it better next time.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I have no further questions. Nick, do you have any questions?
No.
Kathleen, are we ready to vote?
Sure.
I move that we I move that we approve the request from Parks Department to enter to various contracts and purchasing agreements, which are on our tablets for supplies and services for the new fiscal year. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Kathleen, seconds. Okay, further discussion? All in favor? Hi? That's unanimous. Okay. Cheryl Jones, good morning. Cheryl?
Cheryl actually asked me to take care of this one.
Go ahead, John.
So this is to remove Ryan Restivo from probationary employment. Ryan has been an addition to the park staff since late December of last year. He's he's done very well. We're very happy. It's it's nice. We have somebody that has a bachelor in plant science. So another expert looking at grass and everything else. So we're very happy with him. He's he's a hard worker. We appreciate his efforts and we'd like, recommend that he be removed from probation at this time.
Very good. Any questions for John? Nice to know. And I'm going I move, we approve this request from the resources to remove Ryan Restivo, full-time Parks Brown man, number two, from probationary status. Go to a second.
Second year.
Nick, seconds for the discussion. All in favor? That's unanimous. Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you, John. Thank you, John. And then Linda, good morning, Linda. You're doing the volunteer tax abatement program.
Yes, I am. So back in June of 2020, the Town Council approved the ordinance property tax abatements for benefits for volunteers and first responders for the Town of New Canaan. This does mirror state statutes. State statutes allows local governments to provide this incentive to volunteers. And so we have two volunteer agencies, the FIRE and the EMS. And so in March, each of these departments goes through a process of certifying members that are eligible to receive this benefit just based on it on their tenure in the department. And so that list was presented back in March and then in July, when this is our first year. And so July, once the statements go out, then the eligible volunteers submit their their request for the abatement. And so I've provided for you a list. So far, we have 12 volunteers between the two agencies. The total $19,530.34. The maximum per state statute is $2,000, which is what ours ordinance mirrors. And so this is the first batch. I anticipate maybe two or three more batches to come through because the tax bills are just now going out. And so as those come through, we'll bring those to you and then we'll make those payments on their behalf as 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 the ordinance stipulates. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Linda? Happy to, happy to support our volunteers with this program and I would move that we approve this request to abate real and or personal private taxes due July 1, 2021, as per the ordinance titled Property Tax Abatement and Other Benefits for Volunteer First Responders approved by the Town Council on June 17, 2020. Do I have a second?
Second here.
Second.
Nick, check. I got two seconds, but I'll take Nick's.
We're third.
Further discussion? All in favor? Hi?
Hi.
That's unanimous. Appointment, we have a vacancy on the Tourism and Economic Development Advisory Committee and
I'm here.
Tucker, good morning, has recommended Rita Vecino to fill that slot. Do you want to say a few words, Tucker?
Yeah, we do have a vacancy and Rita was introduced to me actually by a few folks in town, one being Kathleen, and she's got a great background, marketing background, which is something that we can always use on TDEC. She's also gotten very involved in the community, attends a lot of the the community coffees and is just really ready to dig in and help out. She's sent me several suggestions already, so we're looking forward to having her as part of the group, the committee. And I believe she is on the call. If anybody Pam, if you, do you see her? I know she wanted to join. There she is. Good morning, Rita.
Good morning. How are you?
I'm good. I don't know if anybody has any questions for you, but we were just talking about your background and how you're going to be a great addition to TDEC.
Oh, thanks, Tucker. I'm really, I'm looking forward to contributing.
Thank you for volunteering, Rita. Nice to have you. We got a lot of focus on economic development currently, so you're a welcome new member. And I move that we approve Rita Vecino to be a new member of TDEC for a term ending December 21. Yes, Kathleen?
Second. I'll second and also acknowledge that Rita has a great professional background and volunteer background, and she's also a B.C. Eagle. So even more reason to
Okay, all right, go Eagles. That's the second. And for discussion, Nick, are we all in favor of this?
None here, other than to say thank you for for stepping up. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, I think I saw three hands. That's unanimous. Thank you, Rita. And moving on to the item we added to the agenda, the Combined Heat and Power Maintenance Agreement for the Highway Department and the wastewater treatment plant two facilities. And there's an annual maintenance. You know, keep in mind, these are, these are basically power plants that Aegis runs for us and remotely monitors. And so basically we don't touch them at all, but they they generate electricity from gas and we're very happy to have these installations turning 24/7. So any questions about the maintenance agreement for Joe? Joe Zagorevsky is on.
Good morning.
Hey, Joe. I mean, this was added to our agenda late, but I, there's a memo and you know, you can't, you don't just buy this and plug it in. You have to have someone operate it for you and make sure that if there's any problems, they come and fix it immediately. So.
So Joe, this is an annual?
Yeah.
Okay, this is an annual maintenance?
Yes.
Fee? Yeah.
It will, it'll be fee and there's a 2% increase per year.
Okay. Thank you.
We're saving lots of money with these two machines, so. I move, we approve this request from Public Works to enter into a kind annual maintenance contract with Aegis Energy Services for not to exceed $12,483. And do I have a second?
Second year.
Nick, seconds for the discussion? All in favor? Hi? That's unanimous again. Thank you, Joe.
Thank you very much.
That brings us to some contracts on our tablets. Any questions about the contracts under $10,000 on the tablets?
Looks like some great bands.
Okay. So we don't approve that. That brings us to Selectmen's comments. I would just note, as you, we saw, issued press release and the Chamber of Commerce and the Community Foundation are co-sponsoring a forum next Monday evening. Is Tucker is at 7:00 P.M.?
Yes.
A virtual meeting. And this is primarily focused on local businesses and nonprofits. We're beginning the assessment process of community needs for COVID recovery. The, there's been a lot of debate about how funds ARPA funds should be, should be used. There's been concern expressed about how clear some of the guidance is. The federal government has issued a 20 long document of questions and answers. But these are grant funds and you have to make sure you are eligible to obtain them and then eligible to spend them over the next three years, I think it is. And but this is just the beginning of the process because we don't really know what the, what needs are for business and nonprofits and and other personal needs. Obviously, there are governmental purposes and that'll be a subject for the both the Board of Finance and the Town Council to to address. And and the Selectmen, to some extent, will be working on this for five, the next two months before we make some decisions about spending ARPA funds. Any questions about that?
I would just, I would just add that the meeting is hybrid, so we will be in the town hall meeting room if anybody wants to join us there or via Zoom. And the announcement is on the website.
All right, there's new rules that just started about hybrid meetings, so we're going to issue a memo next week to our chairmen of our boards and commissions and committees. So they know how to conduct hybrid meetings as well as if it's possible to only the town hall meeting will probably be available for hybrid meetings, but otherwise you can still conduct virtual meetings and in-person meetings until next April, I think it is. Under the legislation that was adopted at the end of the Assembly Session, so I think that's all I have. I would mention, we had a handful of COVID positive cases last week, I think four or five. And people are a bit concerned about this new variant. Although it's a small minority in Connecticut so far, it is popping up in other parts of the country. And we continue to vaccinate. Anyone in town who wants a vaccination can go to the Health Department, call the Health Department, email the Health Department to make an appointment, and they have all three available vaccines. And our numbers again are off the charts in terms of number of our residents who have been vaccinated, but also we encourage anyone who works in town, including downtown restaurant workers to go and get vaccinated. It's available. We encourage you to do so. I think that's all I have. Kathleen or Nick, you I think that's all I have. Kathleen or Nick, do you want to make any comments? Obviously, we made a good call. Let me just, Kathleen, one more thing. Obviously, the uh, the very wet weather on Friday and Saturday made the call to postpone the family court till Sunday. Uh, we we were concerned about people sitting on wet ground plus destroying our fields with cars parking on the deals. So hopefully, we're gonna have a good weather for Sunday and and the uh, family court starting at five o'clock with fireworks. And um, we look forward to that. So. And Kathleen?
Yeah, just a quick question for Linda on the ARPA funds. Linda, do we keep those in a separate account before the money is expended? Is that how we're gonna be tracking that?
Yes, um, we created a grant fund, a grant project, and so the funds are gonna be sitting in the grant project until a decision is made on how to program.
Okay, okay. Thank you for that.
Sure.
No further comments or questions.
Hey, Nick?
Sure, a couple of points on the library. Two points, you know, number one, I'm incredibly supportive of our Planning and Zoning Commission. Um, the hardest working band in show business, as they say. Uh, really, what what they do is 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 amazing. Uh, the amount of time and effort that they spend working for our town is is incredible. Um, and the second point is is simply this, regardless of the disposition of the nineteen thirteen building. Uh, if for whatever reason the library project does not go forward, I'm talking about the new library, putting aside the nineteen thirteen library, then we as a town have utterly failed. And as a Board of Selectment, we have utterly failed. This is a great project. It should go forward and we needed to go forward.
Thank you, Nick.
Thank you.
I think we all agree with that statement. So. Good. So any about any further comment? I um, a few of us are taking some time off away this week and uh, look forward to uh, hopefully seeing everyone Sunday at the Family Fourth. If you're back, Kathleen.
I won't be back. No, not until the thirteenth, sorry.
But otherwise, um, I wish everyone and staff for a good week and we will catch up with you uh, next Monday or Sunday night, hopefully. Thank you all.
Motion to adjourn?
Good, thank you, Tucker and Pam.
Second.
Okay.
Oh, motion to adjourn, yeah, that.
I got it.
Unanimous.
Yes.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Make sure that.
You got it. Thanks.
Have a good week.